All right, there we go.
I need to.
All right.
All right, we are hot to trot. Hello, everyone. Today is Monday, December 23rd, 2024. It is 7:00 PM and we are going to officially call this Cumberland Town Council meeting to order. Happy holidays. We appreciate people being here so close to Hanukkah and so close to Christmas Eve. First up on the agenda is the approval of minutes from December 9th, 2024.
I'll give you a motion.
Love one.
Second, Madam Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes or on the motion? All right. All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Next up, we have the manager's report. Mr. Sturgis, what do you have for us?
Madam Chair, good evening. Good to see everybody this evening and happy happiest of holidays to all. Let's see, I have, let's see, can I get my right document here? There we go. I have a few updates here for this evening and looking to provide a few, an update on some key developments within the town. Recognize some significant contributions by staff and outline future initiatives aimed at enhancing community resources. First, I'd like to take a moment to recognize excellence, and that is in the form of one William Longley, the town's code enforcement officer. Last Thursday, staff and I had the opportunity to go up to Lewiston to the Green Ladle to see Mr. Longley receive the Code Officer of the Year Award from the Main Buildings Officials Association. So that was amazing just to see him and to see him honored by his peers. And to see him held in such high regard and high respect by others is the secret's out. So it was great to see that for Bill, a long, well-deserved award. Saturday morning, I also had the chance to observe our dedicated fire and rescue team doing the cold water challenge or training on Forest Lake. And that was pretty amazing to see. It was perfect conditions for training. If you recall, it was roughly 10 degrees with a lovely onshore breeze. I ran over there and had the chance to watch them and they did a great job. To see them in action was very impressive and it's a good moment to remind folks that even though the past few days it's been very cold, there is still a danger of thin ice out there. Case in point, this afternoon, those very same folks had to do a rescue mission over at Knights Pond. So please keep that in mind and let that ice season up a little bit more. To have a moment of leadership transition, Thomas Bennett, Bennett, our esteemed library director will be leaving his position after 26 years with the town. We wish him well as he embarks on his new journey with FEMA as a historic preservation officer. So he can tie into his archaeological interests that he's been pursuing for a long time. His leadership has left an indelible mark on our library and our community. So we wish Thomas, Thomas well. He'll be done towards the end of January. As we move past the winter solstice, we're beginning to enjoy longer days. For example, we gained approximately 17 seconds of daylight since Saturday. So a reminder of the changing seasons and the promise of renewal. So they should.
You noticed too.
It should only improve from here. We are extremely thrilled to announce the return or anticipated return of Helene De Bartolomeo as our finance director, pending council confirmation this evening. Her experience and leadership will be invaluable as we move forward for sure. We are super excited about that. At the January 13th council meeting, I'd like to bring a proposal forward to the council to consider. And that's to refer a project to the Parks and Recreation Commission to update the long-term plan for Twinbrooks. And key components of this plan would include conducting a baseline review of current conditions, inventorying existing assets, engaging with stakeholders for input, working strongly with the Lands and Conservation Commission, engaging with stakeholders for input, sorry, crafting a vision statement, developing goals, policies and strategies for park elements, as well as examining revenue opportunities and creating a comprehensive implementation plan. The aim is to help enhance the town stewardship for Twinbrook, ensuring it remains a well-managed and sustainable asset for the community. Preliminary work has begun on the waterline extension, if you are over on the west side of town, for mineral springs development on Blackstrap Road. Tree clearing and other work has begun on the west side of the Turnpike approaching Forest Lake Road. So you will see activity pick up over there over the next few weeks. A few closing remarks. Town operations will be closing at noon tomorrow and will be closed on Christmas Day on Wednesday. Will also be closed next Wednesday for New Year's Day, but regular hours all the rest of our other days. Wednesday, now of note, Wednesday trash and recycling pickup is going to be pushed back this week. So if you are, Wednesday pickup, it'll be picked up on Thursday. Thursday will be Friday and Friday will be Saturday. And that'll be for this week and next week, and then normal schedule will return on the week of January 6th. And as we head into the holiday season, I wish you all the happiest of holidays, a healthy, prosperous new year. And I thank you all as the council for your continued dedication and hard work on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Did you bring Bill Longley to the Blue Goose for a celebratory beer afterwards?
Madam Chair. Came back and had an EcoMaine mission, meeting after that.
Matt, I just want to follow up about Bill Longley. I know a lot of people that are in the building trades and you never hear them say, you know, tell you, Bill's by the book. He does a good job, but his communication skills are excellent. Nobody feels that they're out to get him. He's out to get, I mean, he does a great job and I'm so happy and it's a good reflection on him, him and the town and you, so.
It was really great, Mike. Our council reads, just to see all of his peers, just, you know, the standing ovation for him when he received the award and have his family there. You know, his wife and his daughters are there and his granddaughter and his sister and his nephew. And then we had a number of our staff here, Chris and I had gone, as well as Christina. And Richard went with our electrical inspector. We had a good showing for Cumberland, but a great, great day for Bill. So it was really a well-earned reward, but I know he loves being here and he's in no rush to leave. So it'd be great. That's great. But thank you for your kind words.
I'll follow along with Mike there. I, I work in a lot of different towns with a lot of different building inspectors and I think I've mentioned this before, so it's probably not new news. And Bill Longley is a resource that has been available to me. You know, he never hesitates to pick up the phone, follow up, even when it's a job with another community and I've got a question about a code. It's, he is an encyclopedia of knowledge. He's well-versed in statewide building codes and we couldn't ask for a better asset.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, next up, we have public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anyone who would like to comment and come up to the podium? Please?
Good evening. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. Shirley Story King, Shirley Lane, East Cumberland. I'm here tonight to ask the council to revisit how it interacts with citizens during the public discussion portion of the meeting. The name of this portion of the meeting is called public discussion. So I'd first like to point out that rarely is there discussion taking place. At your last town council meeting, the chair read the public discussion guidelines and throughout the portion of the agenda referenced the statement as our policy. The decision to limit speakers is not a policy. It is a practice. It is not part of our charter, nor does it appear in our ordinances. It was not voted on. It was a practice that was suggested by our former manager to help a chairperson who at the time was struggling with health issues to deal with a man from New Hampshire, formerly from Falmouth, who was visiting our meetings. As I recall, it may have been suggested to keep us out of litigious situations because that particular individual had a history of filing frivolous lawsuits, especially with regards to freedom of speech. The practice was first implemented during COVID on October 12th, 2020. It was accepted because it gave great flexibility to the chair. Each chair, depending on their style, has the purview of interpreting the practice. Now, however, I believe the practice of timing residents and not allowing discussion has become unfriendly and unnecessary. It is often disrespectful of the people who step to the podium and hamstrings town council colleagues who would like to engage with those citizens. The Cumberland Town Council is not about one member. It's not even about all of you together. It's about the people whose voices you represent and the lives you impact with the decisions you make. It was a responsibility I took to heart, literally, for 18 years. You must be more willing to listen to and consider those voices and to listen to each other. Thank you in advance for thinking about this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up to the podium? Okay, moving right along to legislation and policy. Opportunity for public comment per Article 2, Section 7 of the Town Charter. There will be an opportunity for public comment on each item on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. So that brings us to 24-140 to appoint Ronald Kopp Jr. as town councillor. I'm going to tee over to councillor Eads, who is the head of our nominating committee. If that's okay with you, Mike.
No, thank you very much, Madam Chair. We met last week, the three members of the nomination committee. And we had a meet on the comp plan committee, two members of the planning board and the town councillor. I, as we know, Ron served very honorably and for a long time with the Cumberland Town Council. I think Ron is above reproach. I understand that there were a number of people, and rightfully so, that want an open selection period. And we discussed that. And let me, let me just say, it was not unanimous that we just throw the name, through the name of Ron Kopp out there. There was, there was not dissension, but a voice of we should bring it out and let, let everybody apply. My, my problem is when it was the, the charter speaks very clearly to the fact that the council was given the authority, for good reason, to appoint, short-term appoint a member to, for a vacancy that shows up. As far as I know, we have never had a vacancy occur within six months of an election. After an election, I should say. This is the shortest one that I can ever remember going back, even before I came on the council. You're going to hear, and if it's the will of the council tonight, I'll support it, but I'd like to see us go ahead with Ron's nomination. But I'm really interested in hearing everybody's voice tonight on this. We've got budget season coming up. By the time that we put out an application period, we're probably talking the first meeting in January, then approved at the last meeting in January, which is the 27th. Budget season starts in February. And it's, this is not going to be easy. We've got a new school coming in. We've got to work around that. We've got a lot of ass and this is a year that we need experience. Ron doesn't want this position full-time. He, this is just typical Ron Kopp. He's willing to step up and help us and the citizens of Cumberland. I'd also like to just point out that deciding to run for council is not an easy decision. It's not for any of us. I, before I ran, I, there was a lot of soul searching. I knew it takes a lot of time. I, I don't know how you guys with young kids do it. It's tough enough working full-time like Bob and I do, let alone having kids at home. And, you know, you've got the time away from your family. You've got the commitment to the town, the committee's commitment. And then let alone all the stuff that goes with it, good and bad, that a councillor receives. And I just think Ron Kopp is the right person at the right time in the history of Cumberland. And, you know, I just, if this was over six months, I'd say, you know, if we were looking at eight months, 10 months to a year, well, maybe we open it up to everybody. But this is a really, really short period of time. And Ron is a good honorable man, wants to serve for the right reasons. He's certainly not resume building. So anyways, we, we as a committee decided on to bring Ron's name forward. But I also understand that some of the councils were unaware of it. I'll, I'll take the hit as the committee chair. That's my fault. I should have notified everybody. It wasn't done vindicatively. It wasn't done to try to hide something. I just didn't bring, with everything going on with my work and with the holiday season and some personal stuff with my wife, my wife's family, we, I just didn't put it out. So I'll take the hit on that. And, but I would ask tonight that the council, we, all six of us speak on it. And if there is consensus to put it out and then revisit the list. And if it's the majority of the council, I'll go along with it. So, Madam Chair, I pass it back to you for input by the council.
Yep. If it's okay with everyone, I'd just like to see if anyone from the public wants to comment on this item before we go into council discussion. Okay, we will close public comment on that particular item and I'll open it up to council discussion. Anyone wants to chime in? No one?
I mean, I got like at least five minutes.
Get in there. Over to you, councillor Thorson.
If you're ready. Yeah. Let's see. Oh, let me do this. I had a really hard time listening to a meeting recently and so I really want to make sure I'm speaking into the mic. So handful of points. I, I understand the nomination. I understand that Ron Kopp did this for a long time. And it is nothing against his character or anything. I'm concerned with the process and I've made this clear. It's, it was weird to find out, you know, like an hour or two before the agenda was given to the public. As far as I knew, we were putting this out to the crier and there were members of the community in West Cumberland waiting for that. Crier ad to drop so they could put their names in. I feel like we missed a lot of steps. No one called to ask me my opinion. And I understand that's, I'm not on the nominating committee, so that could be the way things work. But I know that when, you know, I'm, when working on stuff with the ordinance committee, I spent over 12 hours on the phone with people, making sure that I gathered everybody's feedback and knew that it was something that had consensus and talking through whatever issues there might have been. So for me, that was kind of like a shock. It's not how I thought we operate. I thought we are communicative and open and we're doing this as like a general team. If you look at the email that town manager Sturgis has sent us, it said the council in all of this. The council was the wording. And I don't feel like as a council, we decided firmly that we were going with like a handpicked nominee rather than putting it out in the crier. So that shift to me just kind of caught me off guard. What else? On the, having someone who has experience versus not, I don't really see that big of a con with having someone who wants to be in it for the long haul, not just filling a seat for six months and then leaving with no intentions of staying. I think I would prefer to have someone who does want to be in it for the long haul and wants to kind of have a preview, if anything, of what am I, what am I getting myself into? And I watched, I've watched budget meetings over the years, as, not over the years, but I've gone back in time on YouTube, you know? And I was here last year and learned some stuff, but I'm still very new at it. Andrew, I know you're new at it. It's like one other new person. I don't feel is like going to break the process and we're like all learning together. And hopefully we'll have Helene. So that's going to make it a lot easier for everyone, I think. But I'm just concerned about kind of making the choice for the community rather than giving the opportunity for people to make that choice themselves. Like I get it's time-consuming, all the things you listed, Mike, as this is difficult, like it's not for everyone. It's like that should be up to the person who's applying and for them to make that decision for themselves. And they'll know whether or not it works for them. And if they try it out for six months and determine like, wow, no, not it, then they just don't run for election. But at least I feel like it's giving kind of more of like a deeper opportunity for someone rather than just already knowing right off the bat that this is like with Ron, it's like, it's in the interim, he'll be there. He will most likely need to recuse himself or abstain from any West Cumberland related vote because everything going on around there right now has to do with his property. He's probably not going to be able to vote on much of it. And that may, that may not be coming up within the next six months, but it's just kind of like the principle. I feel like it's, it should be someone who really wants it and who is really passionate about it. And again, I'm thinking you had said, when we were going slightly back and forth in email, that he could have won easily if he had run for reelection. It's like, okay, well, if we're thinking about hypotheticals, did anybody reach out to Jeff Maholic, who would have won if Helene hadn't ran against him? So it's like, if we're going to do the hypothetical game, I would like to know if Jeff was reached out to first. I know he's on the planning board, but that's a personal decision on whether or not, you know, he might want to put his name in or anyone else to represent West Cumberland. So that's where I'm at as far as the process, feeling like it was borked a little. And then also just kind of what sort of candidate I think would work best for the team. But that's all my stuff.
Just real quick, Denise, I did reach out to Jeff. I had a really good conversation with him.
Cool.
And because I have a lot of respect for Jeff. I've known him for a long time. And we had a great conversation and I hope he's interested come June. But thank you.
Thanks.
Just a process clarifying question. And Matt, I'm not sure if this goes to you, but I know, I can't recall the specifics, so someone keep me honest. But the decision to put an ad in a crier was just like a general decision, right? We didn't vote on that as a group, right? Okay, so then my question would be, was that a nominating committee choice? Or that was just like a town operations choice? Like I'm trying to understand, like what is the expectation for the process, right? So, and sorry guys if I'm talking in circles here, but is it the nominating committee's call to shift the process? Is it the council's decision? Like we didn't vote on putting an ad out in the crier. That was just a decision that was made. So it's like, I'm trying to understand what the expectation is as far as process goes moving forward and how that changed, right? So, because like similar to the, like comp committee or plan, the comp plan committee, like I didn't know who any of those people were until like, you know, I saw the agenda, right? So I'm just trying to understand, A, what is the expectation and who is the deciding factor? Is that the council or is that the, am I, everybody following? Okay. Sorry, is that a you question?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. We hadn't received, councillor Douglas, to, I guess to part A of your multi-part question. Would say, we hadn't received direction from the council as to what you wanted staff to do.
Yeah.
So we hadn't put anything in the crier at that point. Thought it might shape up at this, at this council meeting this evening.
Okay.
To the next point, though, ultimately comes down to nominating committee. If they, if they do want to pull in candidates that they, that they find and then, but ultimately it comes down to the council in confirming if the nominating committee comes forward with a candidate that the council ultimately has to make that appointment as a, as a, as a body.
So in theory, then the process would be deemed fluid, but the misstep was in like communication to the council at, at large? Is what I'm hearing?
I mean, I think so. I mean, we discussed it at the nominating committee. I was in favor of, which Mike alluded to, I was in favor of putting it out to everybody. And, but it is a fluid process and
Yeah.
the, the, it ended up being that the outcome of that committee session was to
A point.
move ahead with the appointment, which I also understand has been also a practice in the past. I think we've done it both ways. There have been times when the council has made a direct nomination and there have also been times when it's, it's gone out, like, you know, everyone knows that, or maybe not everybody knows, but I was fortunate enough to be appointed for the first year and I applied for that appointment. Bob, did you have something to add? Do you have a wave in your pen?
Sorry, can I just?
Oh, please, go back. Sorry, Billy.
I was just going to say, because I think to Denise's sentiment and, you know, her and I had had some offline conversation about it. I think the process is important, right? The public, that's what guides us, right? How we get to, how we get to these decisions, how we make these conclusions. And really just honoring that as a council. So I think like, I'm just trying to figure out like where we fell in that manner, right? Like if we're following the process and that's what the nominating committee is putting forth, then I honor that. But I want to understand like where the, where the kind of flagged misstep might potentially be. So that's all.
So I think that the nominating committee did make some missteps and that was probably not keeping the council informed of the process.
Yeah.
I'll go into a little bit more depth. When I was chair, I had a beef with the council and the nominating committee
Yeah.
about how we selected Tig. And I felt that, you know, to my chagrin, I was not in charge. Somebody else was in charge of the nominating committee and, and they made the nomination. And all I had was a vote on it. And so I didn't have that involvement that I thought I had. And, you know, okay, I got over that. And we all moved ahead.
You were right, though.
So a couple of things. There's going to be three seats opened up in June, three seats. And I'll just share a little bit of insight with my own practice. When I decided to run for school board, I consciously, a year before, I said, I want to know what's going on.
Yeah.
And I want to be prepared. Not that I knew that I would get elected, but I went to every school board meeting for a solid year to familiarize myself with what was going on, the budget. I went to all the budget meetings. So that when I did get elected to the school board, it wasn't like I just showed up and said, where do I start? So I think there's an onus upon anybody who wants to serve their community to do their own due diligence and show that they're, they're getting ready to step into that role. It's not, it's not our role to hand something to somebody. It's, it's, it's our role to make sure that we are fulfilling a position in our council, in our community, much the same as we do with, with all the committees here, that these people are ready to serve and willing and, and, you know, yes, people do express interest. But there's more to just expressing interest than there's, there has to be active engagement, in my opinion, that people who want to serve as an elected representative of the community, get up to speed, get up to gear. And for the most part, I think that's how it's worked. People have, have shown a willingness to become engaged. And Jeff Maholic, I think is probably one of the most recent examples of young men, young women who have educated themselves, have a, have a, a working knowledge of what they're getting into. There was something else, but I can't remember.
Can you clarify what your said missteps were then? Because I'm just trying to follow along. You said you, the nominating committee had some missteps. What were the missteps?
Not informing the full council of our actions.
But is that the expectation? Like just trying to understand? I guess like, I'm trying, I'm trying to manage expectations moving forward, right? So if the, if the ideology is that you're notifying the council, so every So if the, if the ideology is that you're notifying the council, so every time after a meeting at, for any one of like whatever appointments, should you be calling around and telling everybody? Is that the expectation?
Certainly on this one.
Okay.
And Bailey, it would have been for me too.
Okay.
I, I should have.
Okay.
I mean, I also think it's a, if I may, I think it's also a, it's a, the nominating committee is a little bit different than the finance committee or the ordinance, right? And so I think that, you know, we, like Bridgette was there, you know, she was taking notes. But kind of you're also, or at least you're, you're looking at people's applications. You're discussing the benefits and kind of trying to build a team, right? And so I totally agree. I think that there should have been more communication out. But to your point about figuring out how to not have this happen again, maybe there's some brainstorming to do around like, what is, what is that outcome? How do we communicate it in a way that's also like respectful and thoughtful? Because it's not as simple as sending up like an updated budget report, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. I think I just am trying to understand, and maybe I'm beating a dead horse, but like, if, like, like to Denise's point, right? Like when, you know, she had something that she was, you know, working through and passionate about, she was communicating about certain things. So should it be obligation of committee chairs moving forward if there's any type of like thing that's happening that they're communicating that stuff out before council meetings or agendas are published? Is that, and maybe it is a post-mortem conversation, but I just want to make sure we're all kind of aligned. So there's not like, the last thing I want when we sit in this room every week, is there any feelings of like, that shouldn't be what we're investing our time in, right, as a group? So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward, so. What Bob?
Well, I think you're right.
Okay.
Yes.
Fair?
Fair.
Okay.
Denise?
I have a question or two, Bob, from what you said, like clarification on what you mean exactly. So with what you said about people showing interest, going to meetings and all that and not being handed something, what do you mean in terms of this case that we're talking about here? As far as either appointing Ron or going to the community, which path is that that you're talking about? Or are those just general statements?
That was a generalization, it wasn't specific.
Okay, okay, just wondering. And then the conversation about, not the conversation, but what you just mentioned about like notes, like there were notes taken. That's kind of another thing and not just in this situation, this one, there probably wasn't time for notes to be disseminated or posted someplace because it was like a day turnaround or two days, three days from the time that we had options in front of us to where this happened at the nominating committee level. But that's something I have been thinking about is, are like committee meetings, the minutes and like the agenda, or just the minutes in general are like nowhere to be found. And I've tried to find them, like on the website, they're either not posted or they're very old from like years ago. So that I think if we're talking about processes, is something in general that I think we need to get better at. Because I've tried to find, like I've tried to find finance committee anything because I can't make those meetings and there's nothing anywhere. And so not only for the public, but like for me personally too, I would love to have, whenever we have committee meetings, have those minutes given out ASAP to, like the fellow council at least to start and then eventually posted on the website. So yeah. Popped up as we're talking about this.
Yep, please.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, the nominating committee is dealing with personnel. And unlike the ordinance committee and stuff like that, I don't think the meetings, the minute meetings are subject to public dissemination, is that? Because it is personnel, whether elected or not, or whether appointed or not, it's no different than an application for a police officer or fireman. I don't think that's subject to public dissemination.
If I may, Adam Chair.
Please.
Yeah, Council, I need to see your question on, on appointments, particularly it's a, it's a sensitive area. At that point, I'd probably recommend having the agenda for what you're looking at doing and then motions and any decisions that were made, record of that. But as far as discussion of the, of the applicants, I think, yeah, you do fall into a personnel, quasi-personal conversation at that point that could be, you know.
Uncomfortable.
It could be uncomfortable. I think that's a great way to put it, Madam Chair. Yep, so I think you're, I think you have protection on that, on that side of it. Whereas others, like ordinance committee, you know, when I, when I, the notes that I put together on that, it's, I try to make sure everybody gets the, the general sense of the conversation and the decision-making process and in the background from that, I try to make sure, you know, try to have a pretty comprehensive record of that event. Or, excuse me, planning board minutes, Board of Zoning Appeals, things along those lines. A little bit, little bit broader spectrum there, but on, on nominating, you're looking at, at people and yeah, I think that's, it's more sensitive on that side of it.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, of course. Bailey?
Sorry, one more question. Matt, who would be, or and where would this lie, processes for kind of committees and such? Like, is that an ordinance? That's not ordinance, right? What would that be under?
It's almost like, as far as, you know, posting your minutes, having
Yeah, I just
It should just be our general operating standards.
I just would wonder if this might be a good time to really reestablish going into the new year. What is the process? What is the process for minute circulation? When are they getting posted? Where are they getting posted? You know, and maybe that's a feature we can do in the crier, Whitney, where we talk a little bit about like how you can access this information moving into the new year. But I just think there's always, there's no harm in having documentation. And then also expectation of like, who is taking minutes? Is it the, you know, I always take minutes because, or notes because that's who I am? But like, is it me that's taking, you know, the expectations are moving forward, so.
Please?
In my experience across the street, they didn't take minutes on anything. It was only recently that they actually took minutes at
Yeah.
school board meetings, but committee meetings are very, very seldom.
Okay.
So I, I know practices are different from community to community and schools to municipal. I don't think there's any standardization that I know of.
Okay.
If I may, I think from the management side of it, we can work with staff and just say, hey, listen, if you, if you do that, you've got an agenda established, get it posted.
Yeah.
You know, we've got, Whitney does a great job getting, if you can give her the material and get that out there and if, and then work with staff and say, okay, if you're, if, like, I've been staffing the ordinance committee and sitting there and make sure that they, we get all those minutes from that, from that meeting done. So, you know, especially so your committee members can come in and be up to speed and say, okay, what were we working on last month? And what, what do we, you know, what's remaining that we're, that's coming back for it? So I can work with staff and say, if you're staffing that committee, you know, we can work on, on minutes and style, style of minutes and then talk about that and work that through. And, and I realize it hasn't been the practice, but it's one that we can, I think from a management side of it, we can establish and, and have that going forward. You know, we have a new, a new year starting in about a little over a week, so we can work on that as well and kind of turn a leaf.
Goals, 2025.
I will flag too, that there's a lot of technology that is free that will take your minutes for you and record your minutes.
AI?
Yes, I know Bob's afraid of that, but
Wow, is that like, is that like a hammer?
It is really helpful and efficient, so. And it adds a lot of action items, which is, I think impactful, moving things along, so.
So apart from the process, unless Mr. Magoon has something to say?
I can see sort of both sides of the argument and
Discussion.
You know, in, in the short time I've been, discussion, yeah. The short time I've been here, you know, we have deferred to the nominating committee for not, you know, making recommendations to the council for everything, you know, any sort of opening. You know, and so if we just took that history, then we would do the same here. You know, I think the counselor is a different level of position than, you know, lands conservation or even planning board or anything like that. And so, you know, I can, I can see the, the need for a different level of action. You know, I think it's, some of it's maybe just getting the information out to us earlier. So if there's, for whatever the nominating committee is nominating for, whether it's comp plan, open council seat, you know, a different board or commission, they have a meeting, gets out, we get to a chance to see it and they're like, yep, okay, you know, that works. So we're, we're not seeing it for the first time when it's made public. And so we have a chance to sort of get our minds wrapped around it, ask the questions about, oh, well, you know, why did you nominate so-and-so because my experience with them is X? Or why didn't you nominate so-and-so because my experience with them is, is X, kind of thing? And a chance to have that more one-on-one discussion before it's announced as, you know, we're going to appoint this person to this position. Because once it's there, then it's a lot harder to have those discussions and, you know, potentially pull anything back or make a change or anything like that. Because it's sort of announced as the council is going to, you know, recommends this person.
That's what you're saying, the framing of it is
Yeah, the wording of it and, you know, the wording of, the council recommends, you know, John Doe for this position, when it's really the nominating committee recommends John Doe for this position, I think is, is important. And maybe that's a wording change going forward that we have until the council then votes. And then the council is actually appointing John Doe or Jane Doe, you know, for, for the position. So I, I think the wording of the process going forward to, you know, I don't know if it's Bailey or Tiggs or somebody's point of new year, really get, look at these, change it, make sure that we're square with the process and how we communicate with each other. And then also how that's communicated to the greater public. You know, for, for other ones, I know there's been some discussions about people learning that they're, you know, on the board or on, on the commission or anything like that. When it's announced, it's like, well, technically you're not yet because you haven't been voted in, but it's presented as if you already are. So I think there's some semantics in there that are important.
Yep, yeah, please.
I think that's a good idea, Andrew.
You almost had an argument.
It's, good idea, no, I, it's a change because that's not, that has not been the practice of the council. The council's never had, never had the opportunity to see it before the public saw it. So what you're suggesting is a change and I'm, I'm agreeing with you that it's not a bad change and that we can, we can look at it for next year. But, but that is a change, it has not been the practice.
Now, I don't know where that change would be, you know, if it's not an ordinance change, it's not a charter change. You know, it's some of those unspoken things that maybe we need to have spoken and have written down as, you know, these are the, the policies or practices that the council agrees on. And, you know, part of a new council, every, you know, new council makeup or every year is, you know, we agree and then we have that posted, so everybody's on the same page of, you know, this is what we should do. And if we deviate for some reason, you know, this is why, or, you know, it's on us because we deviated and, you know, shame on us.
I mean, I don't know if there's shame, but, you know, it's, I mean, the, the other nice part about this is that it was a recommendation and now we're all having this wider discussion, right? And so we can identify the opportunities for improvement and some of them are growing pains. And to Matt's point, new year. We can hit it off. Just, did you have something else or?
No, I said it off.
I mean, if we, but, 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 or not but, and, we do have this particular appointment in front of us, which means that if we are moving on from the process improvements that we know and want to make, what would everyone like to do with this agenda item?
I think we should vote on whether or not we want to do an appointment or open it up to a crier.
Sorry, I'm not talking into the microphone. Yeah, and I don't know if we can do that right now or how exactly that would work, whether it's a table or it's a, what is our process? Like, we need to determine a process and actually vote on it before, like choose your adventure.
I think Denise, the, the process is already written in the charter. The question for us tonight is, do we want to open up for applications? And it still goes to the nominating committee and the three of us vote on it. And, I mean, I, I would ask everybody on the council to look at it practically. I can tell you, I'm not going to change my mind because I think Ron's around pegging a round hole right now. He's, he's the right fit for the right time. And, but if you, if the rest of the council deems that you want to open up for the public and we're going to get these and we're going to end up in this, at least with me, I'm going to end up in the same place. And we, like I told you, I think this is nothing more than the will, I don't even think it has to be a vote. It's, it's a straw vote. Do you guys want to bring it up, open it up? Or do you want to, and let the nominating committee take another look at it and come back with the same name or the, another name? Or we just go forward with Ron and we learn going forward? So that's, that's where I am.
Anyone else have an opinion? I didn't bring any straw, so I don't know if we can do a straw poll, but
Well.
Sorry.
I'm just going to put it to bed. We got to, I'll make a motion and we can move ahead or we can, the motion will fail for lack of a second.
We, I already did public discussion, yeah.
I move to appoint Ronald Karp as town councillor until the next regular election.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? I would feel personally, if, unless anyone wants to jump in, I, I would feel better about, oh, and maybe I should have said this before, from a Robert's rules perspective, sorry Bob. I would feel better about opening it up because even if we come to the same outcome, I think that since we've had this dialogue tonight and, I don't know, my gut is telling me that that's something I feel like would be sort of the right thing to do for me. There are some other folks here that might want to comment as well, so.
Yeah. Andrew? No. I mean, I think I, I would also agree, following the process, but I think like when I just tried to articulate the process and the misstep in the process, I wasn't able to identify it. That's why I'm confused. Because I think like, at the end of the day, if we didn't vote as a council to put it out to the crier and it's the appointment committee's job to, to handle this and you decided to appoint someone and you're putting forth an appointment, then what did we miss in the process? Semantics of communicating to counselors, yes, that's frustrating and challenging as a counselor, but I don't know if that's a misstep in the process. So that's where I'm a little torn and I know that's getting very granular, but I, I would like to understand better, I guess, where, where, where the misstep is then, if that's the process.
I have a question also.
Sure.
On that, on our options, it just says the council, I need to pull up the email, but the council may appoint someone. It doesn't say anything about how that appointment comes to be.
Okay.
There are options, like, it doesn't say you can put an ad in the crier, you can just send it straight to the nominating committee. It just says the council can appoint someone.
Okay.
So to me, that's like, and the crier had been thrown around. I remember I asked specifically, are we going to, so how do we fill Helene's spot? Are we going to put an out in the crier? Like, yeah. And then it, it was thrown around, like, you know, handpicking someone and going to the nominating committee wasn't even something that I knew was going to be happening. And also, another process thing to think about is, if I knew that that was going to be on the agenda, I would have been there so I could make my opinions, you know, heard at that point. But I didn't even know that meeting was happening because I'm at that point, but I didn't even know that meeting was happening because I'm not on that committee. So that's another thing. So perhaps just confusion from my standpoint or because the policy or the options are vague anyways. But I just feel like there's steps missing here, but.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sort of landing where you are Bailey with, and, and to Denise's point, you know, the charter says, you know, appoint a qualified voter for the town to serve as councillor until the next regular election, et cetera. It doesn't give anything about how to do that. And, you know, we've, I, I think, especially going forward, we need to change whatever sort of process we've had. But as a, a council in the past, we have accepted, the nominating committee has, has met and put forth a name and we've learned about it and voted on it at that next meeting. You know, I, I would like to see that information flow, as I mentioned before, change, you know, timing and, and all for this or other, you know, even smaller, you know, not less impactful, but not as large, broad-reaching appointments. You know, so we, we all have a chance to make our, our voices heard and get, get the information for the full council. So then when it is the council, it is actually the council. And the wording of, you know, the nominating committee recommends as opposed to the council recommends until we've actually had a chance to vote on somebody.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Did we open it up? I think you did, didn't you?
Uh, yeah, I did public discussion on the item. Yeah, please.
Just one item to consider, Madam Chair, at least for the council, you know, that there are multiple ways within which to fill the vacancy, you know? And as, and as the council, you know, you established, there isn't a clear-cut policy or procedure as to how the council has made those selections in the past. It's been one way or the other, it's been, you know, you know, you've got 60 days within which to make that appointment if you, if you have to take the appointment route. So that could be either, you know, sometimes in, in, in the case of when you were appointed Madam Chair, you had a bigger window because you had 10 or 11 months to, within which that person needed to serve in that capacity. So you still had 60 days, but the, the council at that point felt the good way was to cast a wide net and see, you know, a call for volunteers. Other times, it's, it's good old-fashioned recruitment because you do have, you've got a tight window and you have folks who you say, well, we've got this coming up and oftentimes, and not, not saying that one is right or one is preferred over the other, but, but oftentimes, as Councilman Reed said, it's, it's trying to find the right person for the right job at the right time. And that could be, that could be the answer through recruiting. Another time it could be, you know, we have, we're not sure who may come from that district or who, who I may know or one of the nominating committee or our councillor may know who they want to recruit to, to put their hat in the ring, so to speak. So, you know, one, one thing you could determine and, you know, you may want to craft a policy and just say, in the future, the way that we, the council anticipates to, to perform in this type of matter is that we're going to do X and that's going to be our process. And then, of course, it's only as good as until the next council comes along. But, but again, the charter is silent when it comes to that. It's just basically, it does, as Councilor Thorson says, it's, you know, it, it just says council to appoint. Ultimately, it does come down to the council because you need to have four councillors vote this evening to actually make that appointment. Nominating committee comes in with a recommendation. And so, like I said, how they come up to that recommendation, there's no established policy or procedure, but it's just, you know, trying to find the right answer to, to, to solve a problem.
Very sound advice and information.
That's why he gets the big bucks.
That's why he gets the big bucks. So there's a motion and a second. I will call for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries.
Sorry if it's weird, Ron, it's nothing against you.
He won't hold it against you. All right. Next up, this is the very exciting one for our town manager, I think the most, 24-141 to appoint Helene Di Bartolomeo as finance director. Matt, I don't know if you want to give any background to the public about some of the, the vacancy, but we'd love to hear it if you would.
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. I am overjoyed to bring this recommendation forward to the council this evening. As you know, Helene Di Bartolomeo was the town's finance director from 2019, April of 2019 to September of 2023, and her performance and quality of work was outstanding. And I've had, over the past, the past couple of months at least, I've had the opportunity to, to review a lot of that prior work and have found it to be extremely helpful as a new manager in the town to try to figure out, you know, the financial position and where, where we are at. Additionally, it is so hard to find a qualified finance director and to find a person of Helene's caliber and her experience with the town and where she's at and the fact that she can come in on day one and know how to operate the ship, so to speak, is just going to be a huge advantage for the town, especially coming into the budget season coming forward. There is one, there's one little wrinkle in there, of course, as we all know, and that was with, Helene was a council member up until the start of the month. And the charter has, has an issue relating to that and, and the appointment of a former council member. They need to usually wait a year until after that position has been done. But in this case and in these circumstances, based on, partly on Helene's short tenure on the council and the fact that she never voted on any, anything related to the budget, nothing related to compensation, nothing related to the position of the planner, she has about as clean of a resume when it comes to making that decision. And I did check with town's attorney and there are no state statutes that have any prohibition to this, especially because of the three points that are laid out are really the litmus test for that. The challenge would be if someone was on the council and they created a position, named the salary of what it was going to be at, and, and then described the perfect candidate as himself and then appointed themselves to that position, none of which is the case in this point. So in this case, that's why I'm asking for that, for the council to overlook that, that part of it and, and, and appoint Helene or confirm Helene's appointment. And she can start a week from today, which would be awesome. But we, I know the staff loves Helene and the fact that she's, you know, to get her back on board with us and her knowledge of, of how things operate, especially with the eight TIFs that we do have in town and understanding how those operate as well, is just going to be a strong, a strong advantage for the town.
Great. Before, oh.
No, go ahead.
I was just saying, before I opened it up to council discussion, I wanted to see if anyone in the public wanted to comment on this agenda item. Okay, I will close public comment on that and open it up to council. Mike?
I, I had the opportunity to serve with Helene, Bob did and I surely did. And I can tell you, she saved us thousands and thousands of dollars with creative financing, stuff that we didn't, we were totally unaware of. She looked at new programs and I'm not talking about a thousand dollars, two thousand, I'm talking tens of thousands of dollars. When it came to our bonds, she did restructuring of them, saved us probably hundreds of thousands. I'm currently negotiating down in Southern Maine with a couple of communities down there and they're, they're without their finance director and that everybody's trying to steal from everybody. You can't find them. And to find somebody of her qualities, literally trying to find the needle in the haystack. So we, we can't find anybody better. And I know what you were saying about the, Matt, about the, you know, what it says in the ordinance, but it would be a different thing for me if Helene had worked on a budget. As a council member, she did not. She was here six months. She hadn't proposed anything related to the upcoming budget. There's no budget items that she proposed. And so I think, you know, us doing our due diligence, due diligence, she's the right person for this. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Additionally, not like this is part of the conditions or anything, but she's also a rehire. It's not like you have no idea who Helene is and what she can do, she's just coming back. So, like, I'm totally on board and we're super lucky to have her.
I will give you a motion. I could not be more excited about this hire.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Oh. Oh, I apologize for sleeping through that.
Wow. I move to appoint Helene Di Bartolomeo as finance director.
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. All right, congratulations, Matt, as well.
Thank you so much.
Let's just get her here, let's get her here, I want the first day.
Then we'll feel good.
I'm off of my shoulders.
It's a Festivus miracle.
All right, 24-142 to appoint members to the comprehensive plan committee. Once again, I will punt over to Councilor Eads, who is, as you all know, the head of the nominating committee.
So we had, I'm guessing 30-ish nominate, applications, all good applicant, really a, a strong field. And we were able to get those applications to us each in advance. So all of us had a chance to review them, so we came in informed. There was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of two-one votes on individuals, it wasn't a slam dunk on really anybody. I had some people I wanted that didn't make it, same with Tig and the same with Bob. And, you know, one question that's come up is why only two people from the four side? And we'll, we'll address that in a few minutes. But we only had two applicants, so we selected both of them and we wanted three. One came in too late, we did not accept it. We had another name that came in and we didn't accept that one either, we only accepted the ones we had. And we came out with a two, four and four on the nominations. And it's, it's, it's a good group. You know, I, I certainly didn't get everybody I wanted and I don't think the other two chairs did as well, I mean, the other two members. So that's where we're at. It was my decision to put the, the list out. I know one of the applicants had been told that they were not, had not been selected. And I felt it was, it was very transparent and should be done for us to publish, publish the list because by the, by the time we made that, or I made that decision, it was Thursday, we were going into the, this weekend, we had this meeting coming up and the list needed to be published. So I'm glad we did it. And, you know, we've got two issues coming up on this vote. One of them is, I, I do think that there should be equal representation among all three parts of the town. At the very least, we should be four, four and four, not two, four and four. I have not been on a comp committee meeting, I, I, you know, I talked to Bob, Tig and I did about, there were a number of subcommittees and having the extra people, Bob wanted to go a little bit higher, we said no. But, so we did go to two, four and four. One thing I would ask that, A, we vote on the comp, composition of the nominees, we vote on them. I know Andrew's going to excuse himself for one, voting on one person and rightfully so. And then I would ask the council as a whole to extend the application process for the four side. Applications come back the 13th. There's no reason that we can't discuss them before the 13th meeting and then bring it to the meeting on the 27th of January. We should, the, the timing's good, we're not, the comp plan, they won't be starting, going ahead until then anyways. So that, that's where we're at, Madam Chair.
Perfect. Before we go into council discussion, I'd just like to see if anyone in the public would like to comment on this agenda item. Please.
Shirley Storey-King-Cumberland, I have given a great deal of thought about what I'm going to say. I will keep it simple. Though I retired from the council, I remain passionate about Cumberland, its citizens' and way of life and its future. For that reason, I expressed my interest in serving on the next comp plan committee many times over the last two years. I was first to hand in my application. While I am sure the residents who were selected to serve on the comp plan committee will do an exceptional job. As I stand here tonight, I know from my experience serving with some current members of the council who directed that selection, that the decision not to consider my application for the committee was likely entirely personal. In fact, I know it was and I think the public should know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment as part of this agenda item? Okay, on that note, I'm going to close public discussion and we'll move into council discussion. Mr. Hill?
Couple of things. I am uncomfortable with our application process. And I, and I've stated this before and I think before even we started considering people for the comp plan. We shouldn't be spending a lot of time looking at people's resumes. And I think we should be looking at people's willingness to serve their community and, and not much more than that. You know, when you, when you see a whole list of people with PhDs, you know, and you say, oh, jeez, you know, I don't think I want to put myself in there with those people, they're way, a lot smarter than I am. So anyways, just a, a small point about how we might refine our questionnaire to maybe narrow down the scope of what we receive back from people, you know, it's not like we're looking for them to, you know, we're not pay, this is not a paid job, it's, it's a service to the community. So I'll end that. The second thing I'd like to point out is that, and I've, I've seen some emails and some people commenting, we serve our community at large. None of us, at least, I don't think any of us consciously say, I just have to look out for the interest of the center. I think we all are looking out for the best interests of the community. So when you say we want to talk about, we got to have equal representation, equal this, equal that, we have that. We're all, we're all citizens of the town of Cumberland, we're all serving in the interest of the greater good. Minor, minor details, I'll stop there.
Denise?
Sorry, Andrew. Okay, Bob.
I knew you were going to.
The application is very open-ended. If someone wants to list off all their professional qualifications, they can do that in that space and you can choose to ignore it. So it's not like we're like, please attach your resume, please list.
It sure felt like that.
Okay. But, I mean, it says, I don't have the application in front of me, but it says something like, why do you want to be on the comp plan committee? I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how much more simple you can make it and try to get like someone's intent out of it than that. So, I don't know, I think it's pretty simple applications, it's the same one that I filled out when I wanted to join the Orchard Subcommittee. I listed off all sorts of crap on there that I probably didn't need to, but, I mean, I wanted to be thorough, but. But, so, I think our application's decent. I think it's better than picking people with names you recognize or blue eyes, like you want to do. I know you were half joking. I hope, the last time you said that. But, I think it's all right. If, and talking about personal picks, I don't know if, if, for, you know, ten years from now, when we're doing this again, if there is a process where those applications are gathered up and they are sanitized of personal identifying information, and they are blind, given to the nominating committee, and you pick based on what you like, not based on who you know. If there are questions or, you know, allegations that stuff was done personally, remove that from the equation, so that it can't possibly be that. Not saying it is, but it's, it's something that is there, and if you anonymize them, then you're just removing it entirely, and it's not even an issue. Also, I'm wondering, on the application, was there a deadline to submit the applications anyways? What was it?
November twenty-seventh, I think.
I think it was the last, the last day of November. I think it might have been November, either the twenty-seventh or the thirtieth.
Oh, no, I think it was the thirtieth. I think you're right.
Okay. I was just curious, because there have been things I've turned in late, there was actually no deadline. So, then, no, it's not late, because there was no deadline. So, if there's a deadline, just forget that.
Bridgette was on top of it. I know that Bridgette had a deadline because Bridgette is a project manager extraordinary.
Yep, Mr. Manager.
If it'd be helpful, it was really just looking at that to try to line it up with the calendar of the nominating committees, so they could get their work done, so we could get, have the appointments lined up for this evening, and then the council could get that done, and then the committee could start their work after the turn of the calendar.
Okay. One last thing, something you said, Bob, about how, like, why, why do you have to have equal representation in each location? I'll just like point to the council as an example. Like, we have X amount of seats for each part of town, and at large, you know. But, I mean, if that's the logic we're going to go by, we should probably just open up the council to everyone and not care about composition. So, I don't know. That's, that's my response to that.
Anyone else?
Did you want to go?
Yeah, mine was just an aside. I just want to make a comment about information dissemination. I, myself, find it very challenging when I hear a resident stand up and make a comment about the feeling that something was personal and where that's coming from. And that's concerning to me that there's, like, I, I'm not certain what the comp committee convers-, or the committee conversation was, but I would hope, and I would believe, that knowing all the work that I've done with all of you, that if there was any concerns about it becoming personal, that it would have been flagged by another counselor, and that any communication following that conversation would be left professional. Because I, it is, we should not be making any resident feel like this was a personal vendetta against them. And it's a little discerning to me to feel like she would have felt that way, and it was discerning to me when I received that email on Friday as well. And so, I just want to make sure that moving forward, when information is being discussed with folks, residents, that it's crystal clear, you know, that this is left professionally, whether you feel one way or another about it. Because it's just, we got to draw the line somewhere. That, it just, it's not good for a counselor, it's not good for the council, it's not good for the community, and it's not good for residents. So.
Andrew.
Just two things. One, if we could just correct the record for one of the four side reps, from Kate to Katie. Katie is actually her legal name, not Kate. If we could do that. And then, I would appreciate, and I don't know the best way to do that, but if I could abstain from Katie McGoon's appointment vote, and we've got to break, oh, the best way to do that, but basically, you know, she's my wife, so I shouldn't be voting on whether she gets a position or not. So, I'll abstain from that vote, and then, if we can figure out the proper way to word that, I would appreciate it for the council. And I appreciate Mike's comment about extending the deadline to make sure that we've got the four side equally represented on there. You know, I think that, to Bob's point, we are all serving the greater community, but living in different areas of town gives you different perspectives on what the community at large provides, what it does, what it needs, where it should go. And I think it's good to have equal voices from the different areas to lend their voice to something that's going to be providing a guide for the next ten years for this community.
Okay. Anyone else?
If we are to make a motion, understanding that we are extending, are we just modifying the appointment verbiage to also note the extension of an application period for four side seats to January thirteenth, 2025? Or is it two motions?
It may be, it may be cleanest to do, if, Counselor Douglas, may be, to do three different motions. And one would be to do the entirety of the slate minus Katie McGoon.
Okay.
And then, a second motion, appointing Katie McGoon, that Counselor McGoon can then recuse himself from, because of the obvious. And then, the third one would be to also open up or extend the application period for, you know, to a date certain, and then, council can then act, you know, let's say, extend that date to January thirteenth.
Okay.
And then, go on, go on from there.
Okay.
That's probably, that's probably the cleanest way to keep those lines right.
I'm happy to make a motion, Madam Chair.
Just before we get there, I think that we also need to look at our council representation on the Comp Plan Committee. I know we've had some kind of internal offline discussions about who might be available and willing to throw their hats into the ring. My impression so far is that some people are still kind of thinking things over, so I would wonder if maybe we have a little bit of latitude to think about that on January thirteenth, and just kind of continue to get our ducks in a row for what 2025 looks like, and have that larger discussion on the thirteenth, that that's acceptable to everybody. I know, I don't think you're allowed to be on it if your work isn't appointed, right?
I'm not trying to take over the town. But, sort of on that, just a question about, we have the school board rep, students? Have we heard anything? Because there are no students on this slate.
Yeah, they're not voting members.
They're not voting members.
But even, appointing them to committee, even if they're not voting members, they'll still be appointed, there are specific individuals will be appointed.
My understanding is that we've not received any applications. That said, if we move to the thirteenth, we might be able to poke a little bit and see if we, there are any bright-eyed and bushy-tailed students that might be willing to throw their hat into the ring, if you know any.
If people are looking at college in the future.
Yeah.
Good resume builder.
Yeah. Okay.
And Madam Chair, you are, you are correct. Council's the boss on this, so if you want to take, take your time to see, to see who's going to be there as the council members to populate it, plenty of time to do that. Thirteenth would be great.
Okay, great. All right. Take a motion if there is one, or one of three. Bob?
I move to appoint the following members to the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Scott Dresser, Evan Sweetser, Steve Moriarty, Bill Follett, Josh Starman, Kathy Allen McDonald, Margaret Helming, Adam Doherty, and Janice Spalding. Planning Board members, Peter Bingham and Lorraine Rodan, and School Board member, Jesse Lamar Vincent.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous Brenda.
I would follow that with another motion, to appoint Katie McGoon to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor? Any objections? One.
Then if you'd like to have a third motion, that would extend the application period for Cumberland four side to January thirteenth.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. All right. Great. Moving on, 24-143, to appoint members to the Planning Board. Once again, Mr. Eads, I'm just punting over to you as head of the Nominating Committee.
One of the things that's nice, when you have the names out in front of you during a nomination for anything, you know the history of people. We were, we were talking about the Comp Plan. We recognized a lot of the names, but we knew those people had wanted or had been involved with stuff for the town before. And the two, the two people that submitted their applications to the Planning Board, first Stacy Dagel, who Stacy has offered, I don't know how many countless times over the years, to be part for her community, to come out, volunteer, to do stuff. She's, she's really gone above and beyond. The other member, Robert LeBlanc, Bob and I have known him since he was a kid. He grew up in Cumberland. He now lives down off of Harris Road. His kids went to school here. He is in the construction business, so he knows, he knows the business. When they're talking about, we're talking about a new ordinance or something that has to do with the Planning Board, Bob can speak the language. So, they're both, they're both good, good nominations. I feel that they're very strong. And I also know that they'll serve probably till we throw them off. So, they're two good, two good, strong nominations. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
I've not met Bob, but Stacy, thanks for being here tonight. You are a rock star. And I would, unless there's any other council discussion, I'd take a motion.
I give you a motion. Where am I looking? I move to appoint Stacy Dagel and Robert LeBlanc to the Planning Board.
Second.
Oh, I'm so sorry, everyone. Is there any public discussion on this comment? Thank you, Mike, for keeping me honest.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, we'll go back to that. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. Congratulations, Stacy, and congratulations, Mr. LeBlanc, who I don't think is here tonight, but we will see him at future Planning Board meetings. Okay. Next up is 24-144, to appoint Steve Moriarty to the Library Expansion Committee. My understanding is Linda Folda has submitted, or is going to step away from this.
Linda Jensen, Madam Chair.
Linda Jensen, I am so sorry. There is, but we also have a Linda Folda in our community as well, who I believe is also on the Historical Society at one point. Okay, I'm so sorry, Linda's. Linda Jensen. And before we kind of move on with this, I just wanted to say thank you so much for your service, Linda. But any other additional context around there, apart from Mr. Moriarty putting his hat into the ring?
Couldn't say it better myself, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right.
He's ready, he's ready to serve.
Not in Augusta, so, you fish to fry. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this item? No? Okay. Would anyone on the council like to comment on this item? Take a motion if there is one?
I'll give you a motion. I move to appoint Steve Moriarty to the Library Expansion Committee.
Second.
I think Andy got it. All right, all those in favor.
She's got to say the second.
All right, unanimous Brenda. 24-145, to appoint members to expiring board and committee seats. We have a large list in front of us, but before we dive into anything, I just would like to thank all of the folks on this list for, one, being willing to put your hat in the ring again, and two, just for the number of hours, I think that we have so many volunteers and so many committee members who do countless kind of hours of good and service, and we don't always get an opportunity to thank them. And so, I just wanted to put that out there, because it's a lot of work in addition to all of the things that we have going on. So.
Wonderful. It's a lot of appointments.
There are a lot of appointments. Everything from boards and committees, to boards of adjustments and appeals, active living, boards of sewer appeals, Coastal Waters Commission, Cumberland Housing Authority, Lands and Conservation Commission, the Forestry Subcommittee, the Forestry Subcommittee, which is part of the Lands and Conservation Commission, the Trails Subcommittee and Sustainability Committee, as well as the Community Orchard Committee, and the Invasives Committee, all of which also fall under the Lands and Conservation Commission. And then, we also have appointments to the Rec and Community Education Advisory Committee, the Personnel Appeals Board, the Library Advisory Board, and the Shellfish Conservation Commission. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this before we move into council discussion? Mr. Schwint, come on up, sir.
Mike Schwint with Lands and Conservation Commission. Madam Chairman, the appointments from the, from the Town Council for the Lands and Conservation Commission covers only the land, the commission itself, and forestry and trails. The other two subcommittees are appointments by the Lands and Conservation Commission itself. So, Invasives and the other ones don't have to be, you can appoint them if you want to, but they're, they are set up by the commission itself. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Can we get, unless anyone has an objection, it just might be nice to give them their moment in the sun as well, even though it's an appointment from the LCC. It is kind of nice to read people's names out, right? Get them.
Get them in the Google search.
Get them in the search. Is there any council discussion on this?
Not on, anyone on here, I think it's fantastic. The agenda hurt my brain a little when everyone on this list had their addresses, emails, and cell phones like blasted out to the world. So, it might be nice in the future to kind of like hide those columns in the spreadsheet when we put it on the agenda, but that's probably just me, because I'm like really paranoid about my privacy, which I now do not have, so.
PII, that's a really great point. Yeah, great point.
Totally fair.
Any other points or discussion?
Thank you for volunteering.
Good catch.
You want me to read all this?
Sure.
Yes, you get the names right.
We left the reading to the smart person.
Okay, let's, if I butcher your name, I'm so sorry. I move to reappoint the following members to boards and committees. Legia Atwood to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Stacy Dagel and Deb Gray to the Active Living Committee, Ralph Olton and Ron DeGrig to the Board of Sewer Appeals, David Carlson, Hugh Judge, Richard Thompson, and George Turner to the Coastal Waters Commission, Connie Bingham, Norman Mays, and Sally Pierce to the Cumberland Housing Authority, Ellen Hoffman, John Gensenius, George Turner, and Pete Wilson to the Lands and Conservation Commission, Melissa Cott to the Forestry Subcommittee, Sean Breton, John Gensenius, and John Stow to the Trails Committee, Meddy Smith to the Sustainability Subcommittee, Betsy Harding and Michelle Gardner to the Community Orchard Subcommittee, Pete Wilson and Christopher Layland to the Invasive Subcommittee, Travis Seaver and Don Stow to the Recreation, Community Education Advisory Committee, Mary Federley to the Personnel Appeals Board, Linda Putnam to the Prince Memorial Library Advisory Board, Peter Del Bianco and Robert Maloney to the Shellfish Conservation Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous Brenda, and congratulations to everyone, and thank you so much for your continued volunteerism. We- We are very lucky to have you all. Okay, up next, 24-146 to forward to the planning board for a public hearing and recommendation amendments to chapter 30, boards and commissions, article one, planning board of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, if I may, I would love to punt to you on this one as I was not at our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to oblige you on that.
Thank you.
So this is, these next two items that you have on the agenda are items that have been generated by town planner. There are some specific areas that the ordinance has some cleanup that needs to be done. And, and then there's also, so a lot of this, a lot of it on the first one is, is some housekeeping that needs to be done. So it's some recommended language. The planning board has already seen this and it, we're kind of in a ping pong situation right now where the planning board reviewed this and they wanted to send it to the council to get your blessing for, for the council to send it back to the planning board so they could hold a public hearing on this and then send it back to the council so you could review their recommendations after their public hearing and then take action. So that's kind of the process. But in this part, the first one, it's, a lot of it's a housekeeping side of it. In the second one, it is, there are some items in there that are specifically some weak, weak spots in the ordinance. And some of that was, was, I guess you could say, developed during the most recent planning board process regarding a nine lot subdivision on Harris Road that took place. And there was a lot of question regarding water. And town planner took the opportunity to look at some other surrounding ordinances to try to find if there's a solution to that problem. Whereas, like, she went, she went as far away as Falmouth to find that there was, there's a requirement in the ordinance that before a lot gets sold, that it needs, needs to prove that it has potable water. Whereas instead, recently, they, there was some testing that was done and modeling to show that there was, there would be sufficient water supply, but no wells had been drilled. So they really, that's, that's an example of one of the areas that they're looking at there. It's also pulling in some of the state definitions for such things as great, what a great pond actually is and what that description is, and that comes from statute as well as farmland as well. So a lot of those are just state statutes and trying to pull those in so, so the ordinance itself is in line with, partly with the state requirements as well as the state definitions. So, so this is the first step on pushing it back to the planning board so they can take a look at, at this in a more, I guess you'd say, in a public hearing fashion, and then come back with a recommendation to council, and then future action will, will evolve from there. So it's kind of, they're kind of in tandem, and the town planner had asked, you know, should we, as she, and I will, you know, I've got to take my hat off to Bridget and the work she's been doing. I mean, she's rolled her sleeves up since day one. And she asked me on this, she said, if I come across items, do we need to wait until, until the comp plan is complete to then go and do any kind of alterations or amendments? And I said, no, if you find something that doesn't work, you should identify it, bring it to the planning board and then have that discussion, then get it to the council level so you can have that. So we may see this a little bit more frequently over the, going forward, but I think it's just, she's trying to make sure that the ordinance is in line, A, with state law, B, in line with itself, and then that its references aren't circular and they're, they're contiguous references that, that makes sense. And then ultimately for the planning board to be able to make their decisions in an informed fashion and for people who are relying on the ordinances when they come forward with desired plans for either their property or, or with property that they're investing in, that they can also have the best and, and I guess you could say, a well-informed decision-making process.
Perfect. Go Bridget, yes, Mr. Vale.
Can we take these both and vote on them together, or would you like to take them as separate items?
Unless there's any kind of trouble that that would cause from a process perspective, I think going, putting them in tandem would be great.
All right, well, there's always a nice, the nice thing about having a paper copy is that you can circle something and you can fold the edge of the paper or the corner of the paper over so you can go back to find it. And I'm looking for it, there's a, there's a, two sentences in here that I find fault with. And they were regarding the, the, the planning board adhering to the comprehensive, existing comprehensive plan until a new one was. And now I can't find it. But if anybody who read the whole thing may recall that sentence, anyways, I don't have a problem with any of it, but I did have a problem with that sentence. I think it should be, that language should be retained.
Okay. Counselor Vale, I know we can, we can, we could put our team on that and find that and, and I can make the note on that as well.
You know, I, and to be honest with you, I can't remember whether it was 146 or 147 that I read it in, but I can go back home tonight and dig through it and.
Was it flagged?
It was crossed out.
Okay.
It was crossed out and I believe it was in black and it wasn't in red.
Is it about the board shall advise a town council on proposed changes to land use ordinances included in chapters, et cetera? Is it new information and as opposed to, and this is what is being suggested to be removed? Perhaps prepare every five years or advise zoning ordinance, which shall become one of the several possible vehicles for implementation of the comprehensive plan?
E, right here.
New planning.
I think it's, the counsel veil is at 30-7. Yep, yep. I think we all discovered that at the same time.
How come I don't have any pages on mine and you two have page numbers on yours?
I've got mine open and, like, I've downloaded my packet and opened it, it's on page 40 for me. Do you want me to read it? Will that help you? Do you want me to read it, or you want to read it? It's right here.
I just wanted to find it.
Here we go. Page 40, thanks Denise for the assist.
Yes, that's, that's it, that's it. So, yeah, somebody can read it. How'd you find that?
Find and replace, or Ctrl+F.
Ctrl+F, and then I just typed in new planning.
So 30-7? Right? All right, so what Bob is, just for focus at home, the language is the present planning board shall continue in existence and continue its functions until a new planning board is appointed in accordance with this article. The town's present comprehensive plan shall continue in full force and effect until such time as a new plan is adopted. So that's the language we're going to put the brain trust on if I, okay, perfect. Bob, are you good with putting the brain trust on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got it noted, you got it noted.
So you need to download the packet and then you can look at the pages.
Is there anything apart from the tech support that we're doing right now that anyone wants to bring up as part of this agenda item?
Did we do public comment on those yet?
Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this? Stacy, your day will come. All right.
For both these, we're just, all we're doing tonight is just moving it back to the planning board for them to talk.
Yep, that's it.
Right.
That is it.
You don't have page numbers. Okay. I'll give you a motion.
Or two if you want.
Or two if you want, if you're feeling up to it.
Two.
Bob, are you doing the motion or do you?
No, no, I'm fine with that.
So are we leaving as is?
I have two motions.
Or do you want me to do the modification?
Yeah, because this is just for a public hearing. So they're going to look at that offline and then come back, it's going to come back to us anyway, so.
I move to forward to the planning board for a public hearing and recommendation amendments to chapter 30, boards and commissions, article one, planning board of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances. And I move to forward to the planning board for a public hearing and recommendation amendments to chapter 250, subdivision of land and supporting appendices C, D, and E of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Alrighty, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous Brenda, okay, super. 24-148 to authorize the town manager to accept payment for the delinquent taxes in the amount of $2,089.23 on property identified as tax map R08 lot, slash lot 064, and prepare and execute any necessary documents. Oh, hi, hello.
I'm Chair for May.
Please, get in there.
We have, there's a couple of items in play on this one, on item 24-148. The reason why it's come to the council level is because the lien that was on the property has matured, so the, the property had gone into foreclosure. And since it crossed that threshold, we need to come back to the council and ask for a quick claim deed so we can click, click the, the current owner will be, has made arrangements to come in tomorrow and make payment and to bring the account at least for that year current. There are other outstanding years that we're working on a plan to, to take care of that as well. So there's, we're optimistic that that, you know, that there are good things to come there. But we are asking for the council to take that action and allow us the ability as staff to receive funds and then we can direct the town's attorney to craft the deed and, and get this property owner back, back in business. And then secondly, there's, there are personal property taxes that been, that had been assessed to this property because of its prior operation. The business no longer exists and it's, and we've determined that those personal property taxes aren't collectible. So we're just asking, remember back in June, I think it was my first council meeting here, that we had a long list of items that were ancient personal property accounts just to clean up the books? This is one of those type of situations. So if we could, we'd like to ask the council to determine those as uncollectible and then we can, we can expunge those from the records as well.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item before we open it up to council discussion?
Ready for a motion when you are.
Well, so just a quick, are you looking at us to, you know, we've got the motion here to authorize a town to accept the payment of the $2,089.23. But then would you also like us to then also add on to that? And write off the personal property taxes of?
Of $628.11. Yes, sir, that'd be great.
Think I'm going to remember that?
No.
You could say so moved, Counselor Eads, and you could be in business.
All right, we have a motion and is there a second to the motion?
I'll give you a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. Okay. So that is bringing us up to 24-149 to authorize the town manager to accept payment for delinquent taxes in the amount of $8,000 for FY 2022 and a portion of FY 2023 on property identified as tax map R07 lot 69, and prepare and execute any necessary documents.
Madam Chair, the, my prior comments regarding the prior, prior item would, would be applicable here. Difference is that this is a larger sum that the property owner has paid, so it is canceling out the prior lien that's been foreclosed upon as well as making a substantial payment towards the current taxes that are outstanding.
You're doing a great job as treasurer for the town.
It's been a blast. Thank you.
Would anyone in the public like to comment on this? No? Okay. Any council discussion?
I'll give you a motion.
Okay.
I move to authorize the town manager to accept payment for delinquent taxes in the amount of $8,000 for FY 2022 and a portion of FY 2023 on property identified as tax map R07 lot 69, and prepare and execute any necessary documents.
Got it, Mr. Vale. All right, motion in a second. I'll call for a vote unless there's any discussion on the motion. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous Brenda. All right, next up, new business. Mr. Eads, what do you got?
Madam Chair, I have nothing else other than to wish all of you the happiest holidays, and I mean that sincerely, and to wish all of you and your families the best of health in 2025. That's it, Madam Chair.
Counselor McGoon?
I'll just second what Counselor Reed said.
All right, all in favor? Counselor Douglas?
I almost had an uncomfortable joke, but I will save that for another day. Mr. Manager, can I request consideration of closing town hall moving forward on December 24th? I think it's very odd that we're open tomorrow.
I will be glad to take that advice. And we've got a year to prepare for that, Counselor Douglas, so.
Just a suggestion.
Nope, thank you.
No, I'm always here for it.
Very well received.
We, the building committee has been put on pause. It's been on pause since the beginning of December and will resume following the new year. Any updates, I will share after that. We are aiming to resume finance meetings by the middle of January. Once Helene starts her first day, we will be scheduling that. So more to come, and that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Vale?
I'm looking forward to the new year.
New year, new Bob.
I'm looking forward to working with other communities. We had a meeting in North Yarmouth recently with Greater Portland Council of Governments, and I had an opportunity to chat with one of the counselors from Yarmouth. And the question I posed to him, I said, would you be interested in a conversation about consolidation of services of any sort? And he said, absolutely. So I'm, I'm taking that as license to help you, Matt, to reach out and go in that direction. And Madam Chair, I'm looking forward to us signing that letter of memorandum with the town of Falmouth here before the month of January passes us by. I know there's, you know, I had a guy who worked for me, I'll share a quick story with you. And I always come back to the job and he'd say, we've got a big problem, we've got a big problem. And finally, I took him aside and I said, you have to develop a different set of eyes. We don't have a big problem. We have a solution you haven't found. And it's all, it's all optics, you know? We, we have to change our way of thinking and say, we don't have problems or obstacles. We just have solutions we haven't quite found yet. That's my take for the new year.
Love it. Counselor Thorson?
See all this? This is all I've got.
That far.
Sorry, it's a lot of scrolling. Thanks Bailey for your updates on those different committees. That's nice, I like that. I haven't looked at building committee stuff in a long time, so when you have updates, it'll be nice. Won't have to do all that legwork. Consolidation conversations reminded me that, I know a handful of us at least spoke with Shirley and Bill Young about consolidation, and they presented some good ideas. Lots of different types of consolidation, there's admin training, full consolidation, all sorts of things that can be tailored to whatever works. And one of the primary things they brought up that makes people hesitant about it, especially chiefs, is that you're afraid of losing your job because when you consolidate, you now have one leadership. But one thing that is an option, if we should ever consider this, is co-leadership, basically. And then through attrition, you eventually whittle your way down to one leadership team. So I thought that was cool because it addresses kind of the main issues for resistance against consolidation. But kind of could potentially have some greater buy-in. But I would like to have more conversations like that, either with them or as council, as a workshop perhaps, about basically, you know, like the, over a dozen of types of consolidation that exist and what would work best and what wouldn't, and what towns would be involved and who's interested. Let's see. The library newsletter went out and their library of things is growing, which is cool. I noticed that this might be relevant to holidays if you've got families coming together and you have like some old slides, they have a slide projector for rent or checkout, I guess. So that's something new. I'm curious if we can revisit the DOT recommendations for stop signs in key areas of town that have accidents. I know the, the four-way at Tuttle and Middle was discussed. I wanted to round about, but I know that's very expensive now. But I know the compromise was putting in better stop signs, putting, you know, oh, dangerous, dangerous crossing. I'm wondering if that's lowered the number of accidents. I'm wondering if that's lowered the number of accidents, if there's been like a tangible result on that, or if we need to revisit the four-way again. Also, you know, Greeley and Main, like that death trap of a turn for people, if that's something that can be evaluated again. I don't know what DOT has said about that. I haven't really researched it yet, but just these areas around town, we already have the roundabout potentially on Route 100 to hopefully help with that. But yeah, those are the two places in general, wondering if we can have like an update on that at some point. I'm also hoping that at some point this year, if we're, yeah, let's just say this is new year resolutions and goals. Next year, I would like for us to talk about off-leash dogs in town, and lots of people might be angry at me about this, but 99.9% of those dogs are not under voice control. I don't know if there is a test that people have to pass in order to have their dogs off-leash, to prove that they have a dog under voice control, or how that is enforced, but it's like a nightmare out there, especially when you have dogs on leash that are reactive or fearful, or don't want dogs coming up in their face, and you have a, he's friendly, dog running at you, and it's not friendly. I don't know if, I don't know how much of a problem this is for other people in the community, but it's an issue that I've seen. I don't know if part of that twin-bird plan, if we want to consider a dedicated dog park, just ideas. But I think that the voice control thing needs to be kind of revisited, because it's really subjective, and a lot of people think their dogs are under voice control, and they're not. What else? Have an article about .gov domains, and I'm curious if the town has ever considered or will consider moving off of a .com to a .gov, because it's free, first of all. You'll be comped as a government agency for doing that, it's more secure, you have to have multi-factor authentication for your logins, so you're less likely to be victim of cyber attack and stuff like that on the government basis, and it would be simple, you just take what you have now and you point it to a new domain. So that's a thing. That's my job, is that kind of stuff, so just noticed that maybe we should look at that.
Thank you. You gave me some perfect runway to talk about off-leash dogs, because there was a recent incident with a butter who's had an altercation, a second altercation with an off-leash dog on their property. And so I think that it is something that could be, or I would also like to see revisited as part of that larger plan, because it can be really difficult and painful, especially, I mean, not only for, in this incident, it was a person who lost their pet as a result of that, and so the second pet for the same a butter, but also there are mobility issues for folks. There are, you know, lots of things to look at, so I'm with you Denise on that. My dad is here tonight, the person who inspired me to get into public service, who used to go to public meeting at Jonesport when he was stationed in the Coast Guard, because there wasn't too much else to do. And let me tell you, if you ever need some stories, there are some really good ones about bottle rockets under cop cars and laundry bills as a result. But kind of on that note, I know it's a tough time and a wonderful time for people in the holiday season, and just big hugs to everybody. You know, have a Merry Christmas, or a Happy Hanukkah, or whatever it is you celebrate or don't celebrate, and, you know, keep being kind, everyone, so. I would call for a motion to adjourn unless anyone has anything else they want to talk about.
Don't like blow your hand off or light your house on fire when fireworks are happening during the new year.
Take it under advisement.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Unanimous Brenda, who's in Florida right now. Warmer than the rest of us.